Um. Joey, Joey.
Are you English?
Give me Jane.
No.
I don't touch these.
Good life, there's no life.
Oh, there's no life, okay.
Hi today.
Good evening and welcome to the Scarborough Board of Education meeting for Thursday, the nineteenth, two thousand fourteen. Could I have the attendance, please?
Mrs. Bealy.
Here.
Mr. Chiazzo.
Here.
Mrs. Lane.
Here.
Um, Mrs. Massengill. Mrs. Murphy.
Here.
Ms. Perry.
Here.
Mrs. Shea.
Here.
Ms. Agar. Ms. Murray.
Thank you, join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This is technically a workshop meeting, but we do have a small business agenda. Uh, first, five point one minutes of May eighth, two thousand fourteen, with revisions. Move approval and revise. Second. Okay, all in favor? Okay, six. And five point two appointments.
Um, these are some appointments they have, um, that I'm recommending. Um, uh, and let me go through them. First, a special education teacher, um, Traya Plummer is nominated to fill a position created by resignation. Um, Ms. Plummer received her undergraduate degree from the University of Southern Maine, masters in special education from New England College. Uh, she's been in ed tech for the last, uh, ed tech three for the past eleven years, um, in a, a special education classroom at Wentworth. So, um, this is someone that knows us very well and we know her very well. Um, my recommendation is to appoint, uh, Traya Plummer as a special education teacher.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, all in favor of approving Traya? Thank you.
Uh, second is, um, another special education teacher. This is Katrina Edwards. Uh, she's nominated to fill, uh, this position that has been created by a retirement. Ms. Edwards is a graduate from Mary Washington College and Ja- George Mason University. She's been teaching in a classroom setting for eleven years, most recently as a special ed teacher in Cape Elizabeth, RSU twenty-three and Spurwink. Uh, the recommendation is to appoint Katrina Edwards, um, as a special education teacher with us.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving Katrina Edwards, special ed teacher? Six, six.
The third is, um, a classroom teacher, uh, at Eight Corners. Uh, this is Sarah Giuliano. Um, uh, am I saying that right?
I'm Giuliano.
Giuliano.
I'm Giuliano.
Giuliano, okay. Sarah Giuliano, uh, nominated to fill this position created by a retirement. Uh, Ms. Giuliano is a graduate from the University of New England, uh, BS in, uh, elementary ed. And this past year, she's been ed tech at the Eight Corners School, uh, and where she also completed her student teaching requirements. The recommendation is to appoint, uh, Sarah, uh, Giuliano as a classroom teacher to the Eight Corners School.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor of approving Sarah Giuliano? Six, thank you.
Um, the next is, um, high school Spanish teacher. This is Riva, Riva Eiferman, um, Eiferman, uh, nominated to fill this position that's created by a resignation. Ms. Eiferman, uh, graduated undergraduate from Colby, completed, uh, the ex- the, um, ETEP program through USM. She's been a student teacher at both Gorham and Wyndham High School. Delighted to, um, recommend Ms. Eiferman, uh, to, uh, be appointed as a high school Spanish teacher.
Move approval.
Second. All in favor of approving Eiferman?
She's also a fluent Spanish speaker.
Great.
And a very highly energized teacher. Um, uh, all of these folks have been very impressive. Next is a high school math teacher. You can see that David's been busy. Um, Jennifer Wood is nominated to fill this position created by resignation. Ms. Wood received her degree in secondary ed and mathematics from the University of Maine. She's been student teaching, she's been student teaching in the Brewer Community School and Brewer High School. And, um, she is also a graduate of Scarborough High School. Um, my recommendation is to appoint Jennifer Wood as high school math teacher.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, all in favor of Jennifer Wood? Great.
It's a nice mixture of experience and new teachers. There's some really good energy happening up there. Last is, um, another high school math teacher. Uh, this is Christopher Hayward. He is nominated to fill this position that's created by a resignation. Mr. Hayward earned his undergraduate degree in math from the University of Maine, um, masters from University of New Hampshire. He's been teaching high school math since eighty-nine in Presque Isle, Freeport, most recently in Cape Elizabeth. Um, and he was a, a teacher here at Scarborough High School. Uh, Mr. Hayward will be, uh, okay, uh, my recommendation is to appoint Christopher Hayward. Um, and we're excited to, to get Christopher back to, um, Scarborough as a high school math teacher.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, all in favor of approving Katrina Edwards, special ed teacher? Six, six.
The third is, um, a classroom teacher, uh, at Eight Corners. Uh, this is Sarah Giuliano. Um, uh, am I saying that right?
I'm Giuliano.
Giuliano.
I'm Giuliano.
Giuliano, okay. Sarah Giuliano, uh, nominated to fill this position created by a retirement. Uh, Ms. Giuliano is a graduate from the University of New England, uh, BS in, uh, elementary ed. And this past year, she's been ed tech at the Eight Corners School, uh, and where she also completed her student teaching requirements. The recommendation is to appoint, uh, Sarah, uh, Giuliano as a classroom teacher to the Eight Corners School.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor of approving Sarah Giuliano? Six, thank you.
Um, the next is, um, high school Spanish teacher. This is Riva, Riva Eiferman, um, Eiferman, uh, nominated to fill this position that's created by a resignation. Ms. Eiferman, uh, graduated undergraduate from Colby, completed, uh, the ex- the, um, ETEP program through USM. She's been a student teacher at both Gorham and Wyndham High School. Delighted to, um, recommend Ms. Eiferman, uh, to, uh, be appointed as a high school Spanish teacher.
Move approval.
Second. All in favor of approving Eiferman?
She's also a fluent Spanish speaker.
Great.
And a very highly energized teacher. Um, uh, all of these folks have been very impressive. Next is a high school math teacher. You can see that David's been busy. Um, Jennifer Wood is nominated to fill this position created by resignation. Ms. Wood received her degree in secondary ed and mathematics from the University of Maine. She's been student teaching, she's been student teaching in the Brewer Community School and Brewer High School. And, um, she is also a graduate of Scarborough High School. Um, my recommendation is to appoint Jennifer Wood as high school math teacher.
Move approval.
Second. All in favor of Jennifer Wood? Great.
It's a nice mixture of experience and new teachers. There's some really good energy happening up there. Last is, um, another high school math teacher. Uh, this is Christopher Hayward. He is nominated to fill this position that's created by a resignation. Mr. Hayward earned his undergraduate degree in math from the University of Maine, um, masters from University of New Hampshire. He's been teaching high school math since eighty-nine in Presque Isle, Freeport, most recently in Cape Elizabeth. Um, and he was a, a teacher here at Scarborough High School. Uh, Mr. Hayward will be, uh, okay, uh, my recommendation is to appoint Christopher Hayward. Um, and we're excited to, to get Christopher back to, um, Scarborough as a high school math teacher.
Move approval.
Second. All in favor of Chris Hayward? Six, there we go. Okay, so five point three, Feinberg Arts Trust.
Um, I believe that you received, um, a bit of a write-up on this. All I have to do is find this. Okay, um.
Thank you.
Okay, yes. Um, as you know, um, Louis Feinberg, uh, is, uh, someone who was a long-term resident of Scarborough. He actually generously left a gift of one hundred thousand dollars, um, which supports both the backpack program and, um, it is, uh, provides seed money for ten years, uh, to the Scarborough Education Foundation. We were told that, uh, he has, uh, left us an additional gift. Um, this is in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, Jeff Jones, his attorney, um, advised us of that. Uh, the gift is specifically intended to support arts education and enrichment for Scarborough students. Um, and in anticipation of the gift, we did start up a Scarborough Schools Arts Council. Um, I asked Sue Ketch, who is very connected, uh, to the arts, to help me with that. And we reached out to community members, um, that had different connections to the arts. We've had now two meetings, uh, with them as we've tried to, um, create a direction for what this trust would actually provide for. The Scarborough Arts Council has brainstormed many ideas for projects or initiatives. Um, one of the things that they're really excited about, thinking about bringing back and probably in a reinvented way, is the, um, Scarborough School Art Show, which I know that I heard about when I first started here and spoke with dozens and dozens of people. That was on lots of people's minds. So, um, there's some thinking about how do we do that in a different way that makes that, um, art show sustainable and also has a community connection? For example, it could be happening at Piper Shores instead of here. And, and so there's all, all sorts of interesting, um, iterations on that. So, we, um, the, the intent is to use that money to seed arts initiatives. One of the other things that we're looking at is the model that Gorham has. They have a Gorham Arts Council, I think, or Gorham Arts, what is it?
Alliance.
Alliance. Um, and we've been trying to get, uh, some, some of their folks to come and speak with us. We had someone from the, um, Maine.
Arts Commission.
The Maine Arts Commission come and speak with us at our last meeting. Anyway, so there's a lot of exciting energy about it. Um, it, and, uh, this summer, we'll take the, uh, the materials that have been brainstormed, the ideas in terms of projects and initiatives, um, will be more fully, uh, developed and brought back to that art council. We'll probably pick something that's relatively easy to do and then something that's a bigger, longer-term project. Um, and, and we'll keep you advised as we go. So, what we're looking for tonight is a motion, um, to approve acceptance of that, um, money from Mr. Feinberg and add it to the Feinberg Trust. This would be segregated as being the, the arts part of the trust, that one hundred and fifty thousand, separated from the other one hundred thousand or whatever the balance is. It's still pretty, pretty much up there. Um, that sits in the overall trust, uh, that we have. And it's, uh, both Louis and Tina, Tina, uh, who is his, his wife, who is also deceased, um, Feinberg Trust. So, that's what we're looking for.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor of accepting this gift? Thanks.
And which is very, very, very appreciative. That's.
Can we just have anything say?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, I, I'm not sure, but I believe I met Mr. Feinberg. Um, I think he might have been down at, um, Scarborough Terrace for a while.
That's right.
And, um, after he had given the first amount, I happened to be at an event there, um, through Project Grace. And you might have met him too.
Yes, I did.
Just delightful man. He's just so excited about supporting the schools. And, um, he told me that he had owned a piano, uh, store on Congress Street for many, many years. And, um, you know, down near where the, uh, the college is now, Maine College Bar. And, um, he was just a joy to talk to. It was just a pleasure. And for him to leave, this is just really wonderful. I'm a huge supporter of the arts. I think it's really important in kids' education and has huge implications for math and, and science and, and English. And I, I'm just really, really thrilled that we would be gifted with such a wonderful opportunity here to, to use this money in a really meaningful way for improving the arts, which I feel is lacking in this district.
That's great because I know, um, even just on a micro level, my kids are old enough that they had stuff in the art show. Their, my older girls were very young when they did. But, um, every kid in there was super proud to have something hanging on the wall. So, to walk through and to find their thing and show it off. And you could see the parents taking a picture with the kid next to it and taking pictures of their friends' artwork. I mean, it's a big deal to, and school, that might be their favorite class and to have some recognition for it. I think it's pretty amazing. So, um, I hope that is a return. The art show does come back because it is very, um, important to kids to see that they're recognized in all areas of their, their successes. So, thank you. Now, on to the workshop session.
Just a, just a note on the Feinberg Trust. Um, it's also my understanding that Louis Feinberg, um, left, uh, ultimately left to the schools some of his instruments.
Really?
And I think that, um, that's, that's still not completely burned up. But, in the event that that is the case, um, we would be doing some special recognition and, and some, uh, small exhibit of those, um, of those instruments.
And, and some way to, um, recognize them in, in any other opportunities that we have, whether it's the Feinberg art show or, you know, high school Feinberg art show, whatever. Um, anything to advance that and also to, that we make sure that it'll let it go to the family by way of the lawyer, to his children. So, whoever wants to do that.
We, we are taking care of that.
Check. Before we move on, uh, this, before we had the meeting, we discussed, some of us received letters from members of the Cape Kids at, at the Wentworth School. And the Cape Kids, uh, you, you may have noticed it's a Kiwanis logo. Cape Kids is a program of Kiwanis, uh, to help children, uh, become more aware of their community and do community service. And these children do a lot of community service. And their advisor is Mary Griffin, who is a guidance counselor at Wentworth. And their mentor for the last several years has been Laura Bustin, who's a member of Kiwanis and is the manager of the Saco Benefit Savings. And I had an email from Bob Mitchell, uh, and he sent me copies of the letters that he and Rebecca received and thanking me, uh, as a Kiwanian. And I wrote back and I said, "Well, Kiwanis really had nothing to do with it. It was an initiative evidently from the club." So, I, I thought it was only for, uh, the, the committee on the school, but they're thanking everybody, I guess, for the new Wentworth. And, uh, I want to thank Mary Griffin and, and the members of the Cape Kids for recognizing the contribution that some of the citizens in town are making.
I attended the, um, the last assembly at, at Wentworth. And they read, they read some of those letters to the community.
Do you give me them?
I've, I've gotten one, so I, I've read them and I've heard them. So, that was very sweet. It was very touching, very nice of them to think of, of how can we thank the community personally?
Yep.
I, I'm worried, I, I also received a letter, but there was no return address and no way to respond. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity maybe to invite them to one of our meetings just to give them a little acknowledgement. I mean, I know that that's not, um, you know, it would be just nice to be able to say thank you some way just to, um.
The club, you mean, that small group?
Yeah, yeah. I, I mean, I, there's, there's really no way to respond to, uh, you know, just to say thank you for your thoughts. And it was very, very, very pleasant surprise. Usually, usually when we get letters in the mail, they're not always positive. So, it was, it was nice, uh, nice to see that.
And Kelly, before we move on, are you going to mention about the tour of the new school that we had on Monday evening? I think you could give.
I could talk about that all night, Jen.
I know, but I'll tell you.
Okay. It was fantastic. The building committee was given the opportunity to go into the new Wentworth School on Monday. Um, also, um, town councilors were invited and, um, Tom Hall, the town manager, was there. And it was amazing. I mean, it really was so spectacular to see, um, building committee members. Actually, we were led by, um, we split up into two groups. So, Leclair, the owner's rep, or, uh, was Todd Jepsen, the facilities manager, to lead us through the building. But, we all know the plans, so we knew where we were. We were all like, "Oh, no, that's the art room. We know where that is." And, I mean, how many hours have we all stared at the, at the floor plans of that school? So, yeah, a lot, a lot of years. And, um, so it was very fun to see it all laid out there. I was also on the interiors committee, so all the colors that we picked look really good now that they're on the floors and on the walls and on the lockers. Um, it's really just going to be an amazing place for kids for learning and for the community to have, um, meetings and groups just to get together. There's so many spaces in that building that are so available, um, and ideally suited for community groups. I mean, from the Learning Commons, which would be what you would call the library, has several meeting areas that could happen simultaneously. There's even a little wet kitchen area, so you could do arts and crafts for a Girl Scout or a Boy Scout troop or a cooking class or possibilities are endless. And then in the cafeteria, there's a small little kitchen space for groups that could bring in their own food and, um, have meetings in there. And, I mean, just an incredible asset for this town. Between the gym that we, I'm sure will have full every single second of the day will be full and into the night. And I'm sure we could use that even as a revenue generation because it's just a beautiful gym with a lot of daylight space and four hundred seat bleachers. Um, and then to have that with a stage in it, to have performances there and even opens up onto the cafeteria side, I mean, the possibilities are really endless. And it's going to be an amazing place for kids to learn. And as I said that night, it's going to be hard for kids to fail there because it's so equipped for kids to learn and for teachers to teach more easily. So, it's, I can't wait for everyone to see it when it opens in the fall.
We can't wait to see it either. We can see it sooner.
Oh, no, well, there's a lot of action. There's a lot of.
You must be able to get the school board in there.
There's a lot of action happening in there this summer, um, with, they're putting together all the furniture and they're hooking up all the electronics. So, they're, I think, using every second they have until school opens. But, that would be awesome if we could go back in there and get another peek, but, um.
We might be able to arrange something.
We won't disturb anybody, we promise. People have been asking me if I've been in yet.
Well, the teachers got to go in, the Wentworth teachers got to go in on Tuesday morning. And I heard reports that teachers were literally crying.
They were emotional.
Because it was such, it's such a change from the old building.
Sure.
It's so, it's so.
It should be as night and day.
Absolutely, night and day. I mean, it really is incredible. And to see it after four years of just, "Let's have a building committee, let's try again" to see it actually built is incredible. And I thank this town for passing it this time.
Christine Koch was on the building committee and, and went through. And as you know, Christine has retired this year. And I went up, I said, "You sure you want to leave?"
Yeah.
This is not the year to retire. And they've already shut the electricity off at Wentworth. And they're getting started, they're starting Monday on a demolition.
Okay. There are pictures posted on Facebook, um, on the support, uh, new Wentworth School Facebook page. But also on there, there is a link to a Shutterfly album. So, if you don't have Facebook, find someone who does and they can email you that link. Um, so you can see, there's probably seventy-five or eighty pictures. So, even more than that on the, on the Facebook site. But, um, check them out, it's pretty impressive.
There were benches from.
Else of the Tree.
Else of the Tree.
There are benches that were created with that tree that was, what, two, over two hundred years old? It was taken down in Oak Hill a few years ago. So, CPM Constructors donated those benches and they're beautiful. They are very nice. So, thank you to everyone who helped on this building. Well, well served to the community. It'll be great.
Thank you. I, I just thought that people should have a little bit of an update on that. It's just an incredible space.
So, is our first goal going to be to get the school board in Wentworth?
We can, uh, Kelly and I can arrange something.
We'll add that right to our goals and objectives.
It may, um, it, it may be a week out or so, but I think we might be able to do that.
Great.
We'll, um, we'll twist Todd's arm.
Sounds good to me. All right, on to six point oh.
So, this is the workshop session. Uh, I thought that, you know, we're, we're, um, bringing to close another school year. And it seems like it's a, a good time to just, um, have an opportunity to reflect on the board goals for this year. Um, not necessarily to set the goals for next year, but to really reflect on what likely is going to be continued, um, work and, um, and where there might be some open space to take on some, some new initiatives. Uh, and this will be a conversation that, uh, we can continue on to the, um, to the board retreat later in the summer. So, I don't know if you want to leave that, Kelly, or?
I don't know. So, um, I guess we could just review our goals and talk about if we, I mean, it's a workshop, so anyone just jump in. Um, our goals, these were actually set in August. So, Jane and Jody, you weren't with us at that point, but I think you've seen them before, the goals. Um, so goal one was work with and evaluate the superintendent. I think we've done that and we're in the midst of evaluating right now, so.
Then we are going into executive session after this.
Correct, correct. So, I'd say we're doing a great job on that one. Goal two, serve as advocates for all children, teachers and other staff by adopting kids-first goals, policies and budgets. And then there's some targets listed here to continue to secure resources and provide support to the Leadership Council and schools slash departments for successful implementation of the eighteen-month improvement strategy. B, policy subcommittee objectives. Continue to fully educate all school board members and the public to the extent possible about the purpose of policy development. Complete a full strategic review of current policies and work to eliminate non-essential policies, revise outdated policies and ensure inclusion of all required policies. And C, monitor and support the transition to the new Wentworth School. So, C, hey, right on. Um, B, the policy subcommittee.
Mm-hmm.
We're working, we're getting through it. It's, there's a lot of non-required and non-mandated, non-recommended policies. We're working our way through. Those are trickier than the others.
How far are these?
With regards to your progress, would you say you're a quarter of the way through, halfway through?
It's hard to tell because they're online. I mean, we don't have the stack of papers in front of us, so I don't, I don't know. Kelly, if you have an idea.
I don't.
It's hard to, I, I don't really have a gauge on that. We just take them. You get like three or four at a meeting and just sort of work through the.
Continuing, continuing progress, I think, is the best way to put it. If anything new comes out from the legal offices, we, we're reacting to those.
You have to jump on those, yeah.
Putting those in front of the ones that we had planned on. And I think it's just something that's, it's going to go on forever.
Ongoing.
It, absolutely.
It never ends, I know that. But as far as the, the process that was initiated three years ago.
Yeah, I'm, I, I don't really have a gauge. We've handled all the required and the recommended. Um, you know, those obviously keep, changes keep coming up. But I don't really have a good handle on how many others there are.
Okay, that's fine.
So, we'll just keep working through and.
Give you a D on that one.
Okay, all right, I'll put it. Would that be developing or a D?
It's a developing.
Developing, okay, good. That's the new D.
Yeah, the new D.
The new D, okay, good.
And I, just to, just to speak about the, um, continuing to secure resources and advocate, uh, for the resources needed, I, I think that I speak on behalf of the Leadership Council and say that, you know, uh, we are delighted with the, the board's work, um, as advocates for resources. Um, and, uh, and the tenacity with which you, um, approach that responsibility. It's, it's critically important as we see. And, and, um, if we, if we were not sort of pushing and, and advocating, we would, we would be in a very different position. And that would be very unfortunate. So, we're, uh, I, I think, I, I put an arrow to say that that's probably something that we'll, that you'd probably want to keep focused on. Um, but certainly I, I think that we would give, um, a P on that.
P?
Yes, proficient.
Oh. No, elementary school, that would be an S.
S, strong.
Strong, we'd give strong.
Strong, okay.
We're going to grade ourselves on that one as strong.
Proficient, strong, okay.
Well, I, I think we also have to, and as we move down to the next one as well,
So goal three, maintain fiscal responsibility and fiscal autonomy with the authority to appropriate local funds necessary to support the board-approved budget. And we have some targets there. The budget subcommittee objectives. Continue to refine the budget process to a two-year projection period. First year being detailed and second year being more of a high level with quarterly updates throughout the year. Work closely with the long-range school facilities plan subcommittee to ensure financial integration with the operating budgets and the long-term financial needs of the school. Continue to work with the leadership council and especially with the facilities manager, building committee, and architects to produce weekly and monthly summary financial status reports on the financial progress relative to the budget of the new Wentworth School. Continue to provide budget-related information to key stakeholders via conversations and updates on a routine basis. Um, and B, long-range school facilities plan subcommittee objectives. Conduct data analysis and facility adequacy assessments that will lead to development of a comprehensive, long-range school facilities plan. And C, negotiation subcommittee objectives. Annually submit to the board expiration dates on all contracts. Project the start of negotiations for expiring contracts and set date for board review. Solicit input from school leaders related to either new or revised language that will enhance our collective ability to achieve teaching and learning goals in every school. During negotiations and within four days of each meeting, the school-assigned negotiation team member will produce and distribute a summary of the meeting, new, revised language, tentative agreements, discussion points, and information needed for the next meeting, and who will gather the information. The negotiating committee will create and/or consult relevant labor market data for purposes of wage and benefit comparisons. The committee will develop for board review a competitive target salary philosophy with suggested benefits for a total competitive package. The board will decide the financial parameters. Significant proposed changes will be reviewed by legal counsel early in the process to expedite negotiations. The committee will review the leadership, with the leadership council and the board, the incentive language for compensation. As the law will allow, the board will seek more cost-effective means of providing health benefits. So, a lot of moving parts in this one. Um, I think you're absolutely right, Jackie, with the budget. We need to do something different. I don't know what it is.
Well, this, the third bullet under A, uh, the, the new Wentworth i- is completed, will be completed when, when we start, uh, setting new goals. But the important piece for me in, in this first couple of sections is the long-range facility subcommittee, because I know, we know, that we're going to have to deal with the middle school fairly soon. Uh, and I don't know if there's anything ma- major coming down the pipe for K two, but, you, you know, we've known over the last four or five years that the middle school is going to need some work. So, uh, I'm sure that will come out, uh, as they move forward. As far as negotiations are concerned, it's difficult sometimes to meet our targets. Um, my major concern in negotiations is that our employees continue to be the brunt of the budget. And they are, uh, we know that it's been difficult to maintain a competitive wage at all, with all contracts. I mean, it is just very difficult to do that. And it is disheartening sometimes to know how well our people are performing and that we're so fortunate that they stay with us, given the fact that pay in surrounding communities is, in some instances, dramatically higher. So I think as long as we can keep our students at the level that they are and, and keep it a pleasant place to teach and sometimes actually fun to be with our students, that they know that they have the support of central office administration of the board. That's our biggest task right now, because there's no money to throw into the pot.
And I think that that is, uh, not what people think, looking from the outside in.
Yeah, I know.
They think that we are spending too much on salaries and benefits, and they're out of control. But if you look at surrounding communities and we look at the number of teachers we have, we are smack in the middle, if not lower than most, so.
Oh, lower?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Just one ex, just one example, and I think that some of you have heard this, but it bears repeating. If you look at the top ten schools, high schools in the state, we came in number ten. The Academy of, um, of Math and Science has a student-to-teacher ratio that is so tight and so small that you can't even count it. But if you look at the other eight, and then you would see that the ratio is one teacher for every eleven point six students. We have one teacher for every fifteen students. Now, that eleven point six and fifteen doesn't seem real big, but if you extrapolate and push that forward, David would actually have twenty more faculty members, full-time faculty members at that high school, if in fact, we were consistent with the other eight who are in the top ten. That's just one example of-
One example.
And, and at the cost of approximately one point three million dollars, an additional one point three million dollars for twenty extra teachers.
With five fewer students.
Pardon me?
With five fewer students in those towns.
Right, but the, but it's a stu-, it's a, it's a ra-, teacher-student ratio. So if we went to an eleven point six or twel-, or one to twelve, um, we would have twenty more, uh, full-time equivalent teachers in the high school.
It's just that it's deceiving, I think, for the public, because they think that is a teacher and twelve kids right throughout the district. And that's inaccurate. So, it, it's not that at all.
I, I think from a financial perspective, one of the things that I've, I've become more painfully aware of, I guess for lack of a better word, is we're really dealing with two different audiences. The conversation we have with the council has to be on a different level than the conversation we have with the public. And the reason I say that is because I think the council, we can go through, we have more opportunities and more time to go through the process with them and explain some of the details. There's more of an, of an interaction kind of thing. I think when we're looking for issues to try and cut, we, we can't go through and do our budget planning, you know, where we do the first year really detailed and the second year overview, because we have people now that want the details and everything. And what happens is when we, we get distracted and off-message having to deal with the, the, um, inaccurate information that's out there. So instead of us talking about things like teacher ratios and, and student-teacher ratios and, and comps for us in other districts, we find ourselves defending our position versus inaccurate information that's not realistic, that's completely, you know, non, non-founded anything. So we've, I, I think part of our strategy really needs to be finding a way to parse that out and, and, and working with the council to get them, um, almost to, to a certain extent, try and act as advocates for us. Because at, at the end of the day, I think if we can help them understand things to a greater detail, at a minimum, if they're not gonna advocate, at least not oppose, you know?
Or at least not give inaccurate information at meetings that we can't respond to when, when we're, we're tight, because we, we can't give the answer. Um, but, and I think, I guess I'd like to see more full board, full council present for some discussions. That just the finance committees, although you'll still have to do your job, um, i- is apparently not enough to inform the full council.
Well, you know, I don't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
No, it's all right. Go ahead.
Several years ago, just prior to when the library was built, do you recall when that was?
Oh, gosh.
I know. Doesn't matter.
Late eighties, I think.
Pardon me?
Eighties, late eighties, I think.
Well, prior to that, uh, we had somebody come in to act as a facilitator, somebody from, from, uh, I think it was United Way. And the council and the board sat down. And all of the administrators from both sides were in the room. And we talked about the needs of, of the town. And that's when it was determined that the library was going to be the next structure that was going to be built in this town. And we talked about many things, about school needs and the town needs, public safety needs, uh, and, uh, we met three or four different times a- as one huge group and just talked. But we had a facilitator who, uh, who had nothing to do with either side of the table, so to speak, to keep people on task. And, uh, I thought that was very productive, but I like to work that way, so maybe other people didn't feel it was as productive as I did. But at least it got everything on the table. It was on everybody's mind, whether you were a school board person or you were a counselor. And in instances, the town manager might ask the public works director, "Y- y- you agree with that?", type of thing. Not that they would doubt the counselor's opinion, but they had the experts around us to assist with the data. So, Chris, that might be something that we might wan-, and George, we might wanna suggest going forward.
Maybe someone like Kevin Freeman might be a good-
Pardon me?
Kevin Freeman might be a, a good person to be able to facilitate something.
Well, as I say, I'm not, I'm not picking out anybod-, any one person. I'm just saying that it was effective once.
I, I think that, um, I, I think that's a great idea. I, and I think that it's going to take something like that to get us focused on what is in the best interest of, and what, what needs to be done in this town in the best interest of the town, all, all members, including, including the students. And I, in, in some ways, I think that we're too quick to say it's good enough when we know it's really, it, it could be much better.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think there's, I think there's an opportunity. I know I've captured going, just going through the, the, uh, budget process this year and then reflecting on, um, things that sort of worked well and other things that didn't work well. Um, I have a whole list of things that we might think about doing differently. For example, I don't know why we need to be presenting a budget out of the gate when in fact, I don't know what kind of state money I have and I don't know what my biggest cost factor is, which is health care costs. It's ridiculous. It's, it's, you know, it basically sets us up to, in order to be, um, in order to be appropriate in terms of, of putting together a projection, it ends up naturally being high, and people are like, "Oh, it's like, it's, it's gigantic." Well, if you don't wanna hear gigantic, then let's, let's get the subsidy number and let's get the, the, um, increase in terms of, of benefits and, and go from there, you know? And so, I mean, just that one, that, just that one pause button on running out the gate and getting a number, which quite frankly, we don't do much with, until, as you see, it's, it's really in the eleventh hour that things get, get moved. And so, I, I think it's a little bit too premature, and it doesn't set us up in good stead.
No, it sets us up very poorly.
So, I, I think, so there are, there are, there are logistical things that we can do, and I think that there are conversational dialogue pieces that need to, to happen as well. And, and I know that Tom, um, has been chatting with Kate and with me and, and-
I had a little chat with him.
And you, um, it, really, it, looking forward to how, how are we going to sort of reset this, um, this conversation in a way that, that can be very productive and, and, um, and, and efficient? You know, it's, it's inefficient, really, the way that happens.
And, and the other thing is, we sometimes, we're getting better at it, but we sometimes, all of us, use the educational jargon that nobody understands, you know? Like, "What are you talking about?", you know? Just like the Learning-
Commons.
Learning Commons. The, what the, the Learning Commons.
Library.
It's a library. Well, they're jargon. Let's call it a library. Most people know it as a li-, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
The average person out there in Scarm romaine has no clue what a Learning Commons is. And I have a master's degree in English. I had no idea what a Learning Commons is. I do now, 'cause Kelly told me.
Yeah, well, Kelly can't tell everybody.
No.
I'll tell everyone right now. A Learning Commons is more than just a library. It's a gathering space to learn using computers, and there's a little reading theater where it can happen with presentations, beyond a library.
I think what Jackie's saying is, when you say library, people sort of get the idea. It's quick, it's easy, people get it. Whereas you just started in on the, "It's more than a library, it's a", and then you've lost-
Well, if, if you saw a kitchen in a library, you'd be confused.
Yeah.
But I think, I think that-
If there's a kitchen in the Learning Commons.
There's a point to that, though. And I think the point of that is, and we, and, you know, we've had this discussion internally a few times where we've said, "So what?", you know, we go around and we, we talk about, "Well, this is gonna happen, this is gonna happen, this is gonna happen." So what? What does that mean? What, what, how do you, how do we simplify it in a way that we can communicate it properly? And, and I think, you know, it's all about communication, both with the board and both with the community. And I think, you know, the reason we have the process that we have in place, you know, I, I'm assuming comes from a, a state in the past where there wasn't a lot of trust. So there's a lot of, of back and forth of, "Well, I'm here", and there's a lot of, you know, negotiating, for lack of a better word. And I think if we can open the communication a little bit better and, and have an understanding of each other's needs and, and, and come to the realization that, okay, you know, we do have to make tough decisions collectively for the town. And, and let's, and let's work together to find out what those are. And then we can, we can work on delivering that, working that into what our needs are and presenting it to the council in a way that, that doesn't necessarily make them immediately go, "What the heck is that?", you know?
Well, let me give you a little example. Because when I first looked at the budget, I said, "Hmm, the social worker piece." That's just a, a little, little piece that could have been solved by us right at the beginning by saying, "We have reallocated the resources. The bottom line is still the same, but we are now costing it out differently." And, and have a, some sort of a sheet or something that explains it. That's just one piece. And we get so involved and we're so darn busy, not only with the budget, but with everything else that's going around. We understand it, and that's what I'm saying. We don't make it clear.
Right.
And then when we get to the last second reading on the darn budget and somebody brings it up and somebody else brings it up and we're trying to put out the fire, they don't hear it.
Right, right.
So that's what I'm saying. We've got to be a little more proactive. We've got to do, all of us, I'm not saying it's just the budget committee and the superintendent and the, all of us have a responsibility.
Well, it's, it's not even just the, the particulars of the budget. It's, that this is the town's budget. It's not the teams of, if we spend it here, then we're taking away from the teams over here. It's all one budget. It's all part of the one municipal budget. So I think, when that somehow needs to fall away. I don't know what we do over the course of this year, but there has to be some way that people start to come to the understanding that, yes, this is the only part of the budget that's voted on. It's not fair. And people would like to have the opportunity to vote and speak about other parts of the budget, which I don't disagree with. But the point is, this is all we've got, and we need to have some way that we can get a message out to people that, "Don't take it out on the schools", because it's the only thing you have a ballot for, so.
But I think it's very, very important for us to coordinate those efforts with the council, because the, you know, the frustration that I faced this, this cycle was spending months and months and months. Yes, we started with a high, a, a, a higher initial budget, because quite frankly, we're looking at trying to play catch-up. And that's a realistic number, and you're trying to put things into perspective. So there is, it's not, you know, there are, there's a reason behind everything. And, and the reasons aren't always clear for sure. But to spend four months on a process, a very intensive process, and then at the last minute, have it come down to seven people who decide arbitrarily that, "You know what? I think it should be this", that's really not effective. So, the, you know, the, really the way to, to work out and get what we need a- as efficiently as possible is to look at the people that we have to, you know, first rule of sales, identify the decision-makers. So we've gotta sit down with those people and, and, and as you said, Kelly, you know, start with that- that process to say, "It's not us and you. It's not even we and them. It's all of us." So, you know, if you're going to tell us that this year, you know, we've already heard, next year's going to be more of the same, you know? And if you look back statistically, it's never been a good time for a budget. It never will be a good time for a budget in this town. But we have to philosophically decide as a community how we're going to divide this pie. And that's really, you know, we've got to, we've got to have those discussions with the group of seven people on the other side first. Because if we're, if we can't convince them first, it doesn't, you know, the community, we have to, ultimately, they decide, but they're going to decide what the council puts in front of them, not what we put in front of them. So, to me, we've got to really work on, it's got to be across the board for sure, but focusing on that relationship and building that communication, I think it's a great idea, Jackie, to try and do a couple of just workshops.
Well, one of the things that I'm going to suggest that we do, I just want you to think about it, we're not in a decision-making mode, is when we receive our copy of the budget, give it to somebody else to read, whether it's your spouse or your friend or... And just let them go through it and ask the questions because those are the questions that are going to be asked, not only by the council, but by the public. And if we can answer those questions right up front, as an addendum to the budget, if you will, perhaps we can have a smoother ride. I don't know. I've never done it, so...
And I also think it's important that expectations are managed earlier. I feel very strongly that we were set up for failure right out of the gate. And I think the discussion with the council early on to help, you know, show them and educate them on what is in our budget and the fact of flatline, depending on who you talk to, flatline meant different things to different people. That meant zero percent to some people, it meant level services to others. So, we need to get to them before they decide that they're going to throw out a number that we just can't live up to.
And I think that some of that education has started about the fact that there is a separate governance board for the schools because it operates differently than all of the other departments of the town. I mean, in the last throes of discussion, it was still, "Why have the schools not done what we told them to do?" And so, when you're posing that question in the eleventh, way into the eleventh hour, there's a fundamental misunderstanding and unfortunately, it creates an adversarial stance because it's, the school is being viewed, or the board is being viewed as not being compliant or being, or disregarding...
Right.
The directions that are given, when in fact, the directions are given to the rest of the town. And you all have the responsibility to identify the needs of the students and represent them and advocate for a reasonable accommodation of getting those resources, so...
And in addition to that, it's not just, I read internet comments, I think I've said that before, but I read comments after stories that I've heard more than once, I've read more than once, people saying, "Why do we even need a school board?" Like, "Just want to get rid of us because they feel that we're so inept at our job and so incapable of doing what the council says, that the council should just abolish us." So, there's that too. We need to correct and inform people and educate them that we need to be here and it's not just because we think so and that it's required, so it's...
And to that point, though, I think that education starts at the seven-person level first. Because I think it's easier for us to have a meaningful discussion with seven individuals versus eighteen thousand individuals. And if we get the other seven individuals to understand the unforeseen, hopefully, requested consequences of making offhand comments and having people say, "You know what? Look, this is a process. It's a difficult process. It's, but it's structured for a reason." And as opposed to creating that adversarial approach, you know, try to get some form of common ground. And I've spoken to a couple of the counselors and I think that's really what we have to start with, is what, where can we find some common ground to start with?
But they don't ask the questions.
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. And that's ultimately the goal, is to say, "Look, okay, you know, we're, you know, look, we've had other, we've had several people say, 'We don't give answers and we're being opaque.'" Our process couldn't be more transparent. It's impossible for it to be more transparent. Everything's posted, meetings are televised, you know? We're all, all of our contact information is public information. So, to have individuals infer that we are unavailable or we don't respond to questions or we're not giving answers or providing answers really isn't a realistic assessment. So, how do you stop that? How do you fix that? You fix that by sitting down ahead of time and saying, "Okay, look, let's put the rhetoric aside, let's look at the facts and the figures, let's talk about, the pie is only so big. We all understand that. How do we want to divide it and why?" And that's, those are some of the, I think, basic philosophical discussions that we need to start having. Because once we have that discussion and once we get on the same page with that, then we can start looking at the details of, "How much is too much? You know, when do we, when do we, when do we go for more, when do we not? You know, what's the political mode?" You know? Because ultimately, we fight separate battles all the time. We're being divided and conquered. We've got issues with the public to deal with, we've got issues with board people to deal with, and we've got issues in our own budget where we've got to decide collectively, how do we want to divvy up the resources, you know? So, I mean, I think, for sure, there's a lot of things that we can work on. I think communication remains the key.
I agree.
And I think, you know, working with, you know, doing what we, reaching out to the council as much as we can, I guess for lack of a better word. You can't force anybody to do anything, but you hope you, you know, I like to say, "I'll set the table, I'll show you the menu, you have to decide if you want to sit down and eat or not." And I think that's what we need to do with the council.
I think from this year's experience, I, you know, I, you know, the first voting felt, I kind of have a little bit different view is, I think, the, well, what really decides our budget is the voters and not really the town council. The town council let us have to confide the first time. And so, I think, even though we're not a political organization, we advocate for the kids, however, I really think we need to work with the voters. We need to reach out and we need to understand the psychology, the ideology behind the voters and see how to work with the system. And the, I can imagine next year, this market will be much changed, the people's, you know, I feel the income level probably not going to be changing for fixed income people. And so, the level of increase is going to be, always going to be limited. So, how are we going to put in a certain limit ourselves and try to reach a increase, more incremental catch-up or increase in our budget? To do it in a way that's gradual and is easy for the voters to accept? I think, you know, that's, so if we know something's coming up, like boom, right now, this year's budget, we have to actually think back. We did throw down those surpluses. And next year, we're using those as oppression and next year it's going to come back up by us. And so, right there, in order not to something big increase next year, which I know, everybody knows, is going to be difficult to pass, how are we going to work this year to keep our goal, keep our budget, keep our operation under certain limits or find the different ways to do it? Because otherwise, we are, you know, that we're probably going to put ourselves in a very, very difficult situation next year.
I don't, I guess I don't disagree with you, Jane. I think that there really, obviously, we need to convince the voters that these are the right investments. But the other thing that I like to say is that, heading now into my fourth year here in Scarborough, at the rate that we're incrementally moving things, it will take twelve years for me to move to where you were before two thousand, twenty oh nine, twenty ten. So, I don't know if, not being a very patient person, I don't, I don't think that that's fast enough. I think that that's, you know, so I would prefer the approach of getting people to understand how critically important making those investments are because, you know, we quote Kelly Murphy, you know, "You just can't, you just don't get a second round at fourth grade." And in fourth grade, kids should be exposed to foreign language, for example. And in fifth grade, they should be exposed to foreign language. And quite frankly, they're not. And they're not going to be in the foreseeable future if we continue to move incrementally in the way that we've been moving these past three years. So, I mean, I think your point's a good one. The question really is, what is okay incrementally? And is finally getting a restoration of what was lost years ago over twelve years, is that, is that an appropriate sort of incremental adjustment? I don't know.
I think we're...
I'm going to be a very old man by the time we start getting, uh...
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll respond first.
By the time we get resources in the right spots and in the same places that many of those other high schools, for example, are in, not just in the top ten, but in the top twenty-five. I mean, we still have a ways to go there.
Yes. But I normally have a saying, you know, I really, you know, believe in that it's much easier to change yourself than change somebody else. And so, I think there are things that are in our control, there are things not in our control. And, you know, looking at, for example, looking at the student teacher ratio, fifteen to one, I know we are on the highest in the state. However, if you look, other states, if you look at the top schools in the nation, the range is hugely different. Like, he's cool up to twenty-seven to one in high school. They still rank top two hundred.
But the thing that you don't know is, what other resources do they have that support those twenty-seven kids? Because it's not just the, it's just not, it's not just the teacher kid in the classroom, it's all of the other resources that support that group of kids.
In, I know in California and Oregon, you know, they're very, not like, Minnesota, California, very big, just like Oregon, it's very similar in, you know, political background and other things with us. And they have averaged about seventeen to eighteen kids per teacher ratio. And I look at those schools, you know, the districts, the people spending, very much similar to what we have in Maine. So, that's a, I think it's important, actually, the teachers pay similar, we are less too. So, it's, if we can, you know, get a quality teachers, pay them higher and we have higher ratio and we can offer more classes, that it can be alternative to, you know, having lower ratios and having average teachers and having less costs. So, that's something, I just think it's working with what we have, what we can control is so much easier to, you know, work with people who, you know, that's, you just see, it's like, you know, millions, hundreds of years, you know, people are different. If you want to change others and, you know, make them everything use the way you want, it's going to be a battle every time. So, how do we make it better, you know? That's just my point. Sorry.
I think, you know, the purpose of this meeting is a goal-setting. And I think it's, you know, just having the hearing these conversations we're having, it's kind of clear that, I think we all have ideas of where we want to be, whether it's student teacher ratio, whether it's, you know, per pupil funding or something. I think it's important for us, when we do our, when we sit down to establish our goals, to pick some targets. And to say, "Look, if we want to be, do we want to be state average funding? And if we do, do we want to do it in three years or five years or seven years?" And I think we start with that. That doesn't mean it's casting concrete and we lock solid our fort, but I think we start with that, where do we want to be discussion? Then I think we can go to the council and say, "Look, work with us. Here's our goal. If it's a realistic goal and you agree that it's a good goal, help us get there. How do we get there together?" But we have to establish where we want the end line to be first and how we're going to measure that. So, whether it's, I think we need to think about it and decide, is it going to be, you know, student teacher ratio? Is it going to be, I mean, personally for me, I'd love to see the average pupil funding. I'd love to be able to hit that number because then we can determine whether we want to invest that in people or in programs or in technology, or we can determine how that resource is going to be utilized. So, for me, I would prefer to say, "Look, my goal for our district would be to get to the average state funding. I don't need to be top two, I don't need to be top five, I just want to be average." I don't think that's unrealistic. And I think that's an easy, I think that's a tenable position that we could present to the council and say, "Okay, if you agree that this is a good thing, help us get there." How do we do it?
I think this discussion was needed and I think it's been very productive.
Yeah.
And there is opportunity, what is the date, Kelly, that we have the, I was looking at Kelly Johnston, the retreat for the board?
Fourteenth, August fourteenth.
August...
Fourteenth. Yeah, it's, I think, changed maybe, but...
And it looks as though we're going to try to get back to SMCC. So, there'll be plenty of time to set these goals. And, you know, I know, for example, the long-range facilities planning group, and Jane can speak to it, really, there's a lot of data there. There's a lot of stuff to sink our teeth into and we're going to have to start looking at that and determining what direction we're going and answering the question about the middle school and the use of, you know, Wentworth space and what are we doing with the K2s and...
We have to move in that direction definitely.
It's a, it's a good data and you can, if you can think of a scenario, we can run the scenario and tell you how much it's going to cost and at what point in time it will return on the investment that you make and...
We're having others yet, but we will.
It's getting there, yeah.
Well, you know, we did this, it's really funny because people, I've heard people say, "Well, they've never done any long-range planning." Well, that's baloney because when Bob Mitchell and David Benhaman were first on the board, we spent one entire summer with PDT. At that time, we didn't even have Harriman, we had Portland Design Team. And came up with sixty million dollars as the need to, for the high school and the middle school in Wentworth. That was several years ago, but for the, you know, and then when, when we got the high school and we said we wanted to do Wentworth, we said, "Wait a minute, we told you it was going to be sixty million dollars." And it came in sixty-two million. I mean...
Pretty close.
They didn't want to hear it. So, sometimes that is what becomes frustrating for me, is you do what you think is right and then the ones who can control whether it goes to the voters are saying, "No, we don't want to hear it."
I sometimes think it's hard to adjust what we're doing to meet expectations in the public. It'd be, just for example, I was listening to NPR the other day, they're talking about the evolution of achievement tests and SATs and how they got to be where they are. And they were talking about how not that long ago, to get into college, you had to have had Greek and Latin and several sciences. And not that long ago, even less time, when I was in school in Scarborough, in sixth grade, we were exposed to Arabic and Chinese and Japanese and Russian in this town. And granted, I think that was mostly by residents that volunteered their time to come in, but it's been in town. We've had kids being exposed to foreign language, not that they need to be fluent in sixth grade, but have exposure to it. So, when people say, "It's good enough or it's a waste of time, you know, they don't need it, what's wrong with the old way?" Well, that was the old way. So, I think it's hard, it's a moving target. Whoever is complaining, we can't adjust the budget to meet their needs. We have to go forward with a budget and guiding the school department in a way that makes sense for kids and it's going to be the best education for the kids in schools right now, this day, not fifty years ago, not fifty years from now. But all we can do is keep doing what we're doing and try to educate people about why and why it's important. So, I have a hard time with, I understand what voters are telling us, what people are telling us, but they don't have all the information we have. So, it's our job to give it to them.
Yes.
-and go from there, because we can't bend to the whim.
And I'd also like to point out, it's impossible to condense six months' worth of meetings-
Right, into six days-
-two days before a vote-
Right.
-and expect people to get everything and understand all the decisions that were made up to that point, so-
I know. I think it's more too about photorepathy.
And that's a big part of it as well?
And I'm not sure. Maybe we need to borrow some of the strategies of different political parties are using in order to get the vote out.
Well, I think it's-
It's what it's beginning to feel like.
There's no one-size-fits-all for this. We've got a lot of work to do in a lot of areas, you know, I mean, we've got- but I think, again, it boils down to communication on multiple fronts. And that's what we've gotta work on, and that's, I think that's where we focus our goal-setting on, is that continues to be the challenge that we have, whether it's with the board, or the town, or voters, or whatever. I mean, that's really-
Well, that's goal six, so we've sort of jumped in.
Yeah, sorry.
I really appreciate, you know, communication, everybody's communication is really, really important, however, never backing to find better ways to do things, and better ways to educate. So, I think always make that one of the goals is important. I don't think, you know, all we do is we stay with what we're doing, and we just educate and communicate. I think there are more to that, there are both ways have to be worked.
So, let's go to goal four. Delegate to the superintendent the day-to-day administration of the school district, including discipline and all personnel matters. And the target there is to continue to govern consistent with this delegation and adopt policy to support the superintendent's day-to-day management of the district. I think we've been doing that.
That happens.
I would say that is ongoing. Good job, everyone. Goal five, evaluate the board's own leadership, governance, and teamwork for children. Targets: advocacy, represent the needs and interests of every student, and advocate for adequate and appropriate resources to meet these needs. Board development, continue to engage in regular self-assessment and investment development using diverse approaches that address the needs of the board as a whole, as well as those of individual board members. Establish a stronger focus on new school board member development, and also planning and setting goals, use strategic planning to set educational goals and determine the means for accomplishing them. I think we're doing all right. I know, it's advocacy, I think we've, short of quitting all our jobs and disowning our families, been pretty strong advocates for the kids in this town, so-
I won't speak for you guys, being the two newest board members, but I know when I was on-boarded, there wasn't much of an onboarding process. I'd like to see us do a little bit better job on-boarding people, whether it's providing a package of materials to bring them up to speed, whether it's Marzano and a Drummond-Woodson book or something, but a little bit more of a formal process, I think we oughta work on that a little bit more, because we're doing a lot of OJT, and I think that sometimes can be a little overwhelming. So, it'd be nice to have a little bit more of a formal approach to new board training. I'm not speaking for you guys, but-
And I also think, not maybe a formal mentorship or something like that, but someone, you know, you can- that you're sort of assigned to, that you can call and be like, "What are we talking about here, what does this all mean, and give me the 411 on it?" Just to sort of get you up to speed those first few months. I mean, you don't know going in to the budget cycle, what the budget cycle is gonna involve. I remember saying to Kelly at the beginning, "I feel good, I'm confident, it's great." And she's like, "Uh-huh." "Why are you so negative about it?"
She's rather deliberate, she goes through the cycle.
It's harder to get candidates when you know all the facts, that's the thing.
Do what I tell you to do, you'll be fine.
That got me through.
Well, you know, it's, when Christine and I came on the board, we were fortunate in that we were, for a lot of reasons, we were unopposed when we got on the board. And because of that, we knew that we were de facto gonna be on the board, so we were able to go to the state convention in October. And so, there's a lot of boardsmanship stuff, which is actually unfortunate, the timing of that. I don't know why it's in October, when people generally have their elections in November, because there's a lot of good information that comes out of that, so I don't know if we can change the whole state, probably not, but-
You have to wait a whole year to actually go to it.
Yeah, so it's-
Yeah. But remember, there are a lot of boards who are elected in June.
True, true.
Well, just around us, I'd say, Thomas and Cable Littis, I think, are June elections. They go with the June primary.
Well, I- but even if it stays the same, you've gotta file your paperwork the first week in September, so if we knew a person was, you know, in a situation where they're unopposed, then maybe we oughta just bring them along, you know?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know if you- if it can only go if you're sworn in as a board member, or the public can go, I mean-
Yeah, I think the public could go.
If it was an unopposed position, it wouldn't-
It, you know, I think it, um, is unlikely that would be a repeat situation this year, but-
I also think you gotta be careful that, you know, I mean, if- because if you do have contended races, you know, you're gonna have somebody come in unnecessarily unprepared that, you know, you know what I'm saying? I think it would be nice to have something that's a little more for, maybe we do look at changing the cycle. I don't know if it's a charter issue, or if it's-
Well, when I was first on the board, the election for a school board and council was in December. It was in December, and then you were seated in January. And they- I can't tell you the year that they changed the charter to have it coincide with the November elections, which makes much more sense.
For the- maybe for the council, but in terms of the regular academic school year starting in September, it would make sense for us to get new board members in June. Because September, we've got a whole new- I mean, these guys are coming in, A, in the middle of an academic year, we all do, in the middle of an academic year, and then B, you jump right into a budget fight, which is very complex and convoluted and, you know, so I-
I'm not going there.
Well, could the vote-
No, no, no.
It's a possibility, I mean-
Couldn't the vote be attached to the, uh, school budget? You're coming to vote on the budget, you're also voting on-
I don't think they'd elect anybody if it was attached to the school budget.
Well, the primaries are held in June every year, right?
It's not a separate vote.
Yeah.
But the primaries are held every year in June, right? So, I mean, if we did have, if we, I mean, maybe we- that's something I think would be worth looking into, at least maybe it's not possible, I don't know, but to me, it would make a lot of sense.
It would cause the charter change.
I know, but they've changed it obviously in the past to go from November, December to November. So, if we- I mean, if it doesn't affect the council, and it's just us, and we request a charter change, and it's legal, why wouldn't they accommodate us?
Don't know.
Right, so let's ask.
Show us a reason.
More, if we ask, they-
They might say yes.
I was gonna say something negative as well.
Because those other towns did just change recently. They just changed recently.
But keep in mind also, that there are many school boards, people who are elected at town meeting.
Yeah.
So, it's-
By constitution?
It's inconsistent throughout the state.
No, 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 no.
Not at all.
Okay, so, goal six, we talked about a lot already. Develop consistent with the approach of leadership council, community-wide communication strategy. Continue to develop and implement a comprehensive school board communication strategy with the various school and community constituencies. Continue to solicit and encourage many forms of parent and community participation in the school system. I know there's always work, and we can always do a better job or do more, but I think we've been working on this one pretty hard all year.
Yep, just one example, when I heard you say, "Encourage parents and community participation in the school system." Pleasant Hill, our smallest little elementary K-two school, did a calculation of the volunteer hours that they have, and the volunteer hours, when they added them up and divided them by the school day, ended up being a hundred and forty, I think it was a hundred and forty-two school days' worth of volunteer effort in that school.
I believe it.
So, you can imagine what it is across the district.
I believe it, it's, I mean, without volunteers-
The equivalent of a hundred and forty-two-
Would be sunk.
Full days of work that people have invested.
I think the easiest way to pass the budget is to put the polling booths at each of the K-two schools.
It's, um, we've worked really hard this year with the going and meeting with groups, exterior groups.
Done a good job, I think.
Well, I, yeah, okay, yeah. We've done a good job with that, we have our official Facebook page now, we can get correct information to people. I think district leaders have done a good job with press releases, I mean, I think we're doing, I think we're doing a good job with this one. It's always, like I said, people think that we're not giving enough information, our meetings are always in public, you can tell by the crowd here, they're not attended. It's not for lack of trying, not for lack of trying. We do want people to know and to be engaged, so we'll keep beating that horse, I guess, until-
Well, I'll tell you, this is the best board I have ever worked with, collectively. I mean, we don't always just always agree, but when we disagree, it is constructive, it is easy to work with everybody on the board. We have the same aim, we all want what's best for our children without any personal vendettas, or it's just been pleasant for me that way, it truly, truly has.
Okay, so, I also wanna review this meeting schedule, or is that just for information?
That's just for your information, we changed the things that we needed to change, cleaned it up. So, do take a look at it, if there's any conflicts, you can let us know, not personal conflicts, conflicts in general.
Right, okay. All right, so now, we have scheduled to go into executive session. So, I guess I'll make the motion to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five, six A, to discuss the superintendent evaluation for twenty thirteen, fourteen, and not return to public session.
Second.
All in favor? Thanks. Okay, we are adjourned to executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Creach.
Thank you, David.